Uh, city clerk, can you please take the role?
Yes, Alderman Greathwaite. Here, Alderman Wynn. Maybe we should give everybody a second to get back there. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Lou Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Saffordan.
Here.
Alderman Revel.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
And Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Do we have Alderman Wynn?
Alderman Wynn is gonna be absent this evening.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, that's correct. He's absent in the committees.
All right. Well, great. Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Reed. Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, September 14th, 2020 Evanston City Council meeting. It's been a while since we've had a city council meeting, so I hope everyone has had a nice August. We will have a busy fall with meetings on our city budget and many other, um, in policing and many other issues before the city. Um, we're going to go to public announcements because we haven't met for a month. Uh, I have several, uh, announcements and proclamations that I want to make this evening. Two are pretty, uh, pretty straightforward and short, so I'm actually going to read them. And then the third, I'm gonna hand off to Kimberly Cull, our emergency management director here with the city of Evanston. So the first one that I want to recognize is September 15th, so starting tomorrow through October 15th, 2020, is Evanston Hispanic Heritage Month. We all value the diversity that we have in our community, including ethnic diversity. Our Hispanic population in Evanston continues to grow as it is everywhere, and uh, and we want to recognize the richness of our community because of the Latinos that live here. So whereas the observance of National Hispanic Heritage Month started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson, and expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting tomorrow, September 15th, and ending on October 15th, and whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, recognition is given to millions of Hispanic Latino Americans, whose love of family, hard work, and community have helped them unite as a people and sustain as a nation. Whereas, it is important to celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of Latin Americans and immigrants, whose ancestors came, uh, came from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, and Central and South America, and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped Hispanics as a people. Now, therefore, I, Stephen Howard Hagerty, the mayor of the city of Evanston, do hereby proclaim September 15th, October 15th, 2020, as Evanston Hispanic Heritage Month, as the official designated month for the city of Evanston's annual Hispanic Heritage Month, and call upon everyone in Evanston to join together in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Um, normally, we have all sorts of activities during, during this month, um, where we all gather and get together in the community. Because of the pandemic, there will probably be less of that, but there will still be activities, and we will be promoting them in the monthly, uh, in the weekly newsletter and everything. So, um, that's, uh, that's, uh, that proclamation. Second proclamation, uh, is also is National Senior Center Month, um, here across the country and here in Evanston. Uh, we are fortunate, uh, because of, uh, Joseph Le, uh, Joe Levy and his family and many other families who have supported seniors in this community to recognize this month. Um, and so I just, this is pretty short as well. Uh, want to just stress the importance of seniors in our community. One of the beautiful things about Evanston is, uh, we're diverse in every way, um, including age diversity, and people can grow old here in our community, um, and, uh, and live a really vibrant, enjoyable life here. So whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and better the lives of younger generations, and whereas the Levy Senior Center has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of the city of Evanston, and whereas through the wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior centers empower older citizens of the city of Evanston to contribute to their own health and well-being, and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas during the pandemic, the Levy Senior Center has been a community partner in ensuring that our most vulnerable citizens, people aged 55 and older, many with underlying health conditions, are cared for and able to stay safe and healthy. Whereas, the Levy Senior Center in the city of Evanston, County of Cook, state of Illinois, affirm the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contribution to the community. Now, therefore, I, Stephen Howard Hagerty, mayor of the city of Evanston, do hereby proclaim September 20th as National Senior Center Month in the city of Evanston, and call upon all of us to recognize the special contributions of the senior center participants in the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of our older community, of our older citizens in the community. So I want to thank everybody who is part of the Levy Senior Center. It takes a lot of people to run that. I know we haven't been able to have that, um, facility at full capacity also because of the pandemic. And I also want to recognize Audrey Thompson, uh, and her staff, who work really, really closely with the senior community in our, in our city. Um, I also, just as a connection to the pandemic, the entire senior community, um, in the long-term care facilities that we have in town have really, all summer, um, really done a terrific job with managing, uh, the pandemic. We've had very few cases during this time there, and, um, and I appreciate their good, their good work. Uh, next up is, this is, um, coincidentally, uh, in the middle of a pandemic, Emergency Preparedness Month. And, uh, it's important for all of us to recognize the importance of preparedness. I am proud of how Evanston has come together, um, to, uh, you know, prepare, respond, and, and work to try and recover from this disaster. This evening on the agenda is going to be a big discussion about our economic recovery and the impact this is having on our small businesses here in Evanston, which is significant. Um, and we need to have a long-term plan for how we're gonna, uh, recover, uh, as a community, because it's gonna take many, many, many years. Um, but preparing for bad things that can happen is critically important in terms of your successful response to those. And so, uh, this is Emergency Preparedness Month all around the United States. Um, its meaning, I think, is more important than ever. And what I wanted to do this evening is just have Kimberly Cull, who is our, uh, division chief at the fire department, but also our emergency manager for the city of Evanston. I wanted to give her just a couple minutes to recognize this month and, and, um, share with us the importance of it and the activities that are occurring this month.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. You're a little soft, but we can hear you.
Dial it up here on this end. All right. So, um, as the mayor mentioned, uh, this is an annual event. Every September, National Preparedness Month is recognized. This year's theme is disasters don't wait. Make your plan today. So throughout the month of September, there are four educational topics that will be covered. The topics this month include disaster planning, pre-disaster mitigation, which includes anything from weatherproofing your home, making sure your insurance policies are up to date and adequate for the coverages you need, making an emergency, emergency preparedness kit, and teaching your youth about importance of being prepared. So leading by example. And certainly, I think we would agree that it's never been more relevant today with the COVID crisis and, uh, the more extreme weather events that we, uh, are experiencing and soon to experience more of. Disaster planning and preparedness, uh, first and foremost starts with the individual. Uh, it includes anything from lifesaving skills, CPR and first aid, having a plan in case you have to evacuate and, and coordination with your family, having a, a point of exit and, uh, a reconvening point. Financial planning and financial recovery, uh, as, uh, the mayor mentioned, is, is a, is a very large component of being prepared. Unfortunately, only about 30% of the U.S. is indicated to have a savings account, um, estimates indicate. And, uh, as for communications, um, emergency communications is really vital. Uh, now, I think, um, for some people in town that are signed up for the Evanston Alerts or something that's called Everbridge, uh, you receive the text message, uh, or email or voice, um, message, uh, indicating that, um, there was a storm August 10th, um, just last month, a little over a month ago now. Uh, our weather, uh, reports indicated we had 100 mile per hour potential winds and one and a half inch, uh, hail that was potential for our area. It was, uh, as a result from the derecho and the Rogers Park area was directly impacted from that. So after the alert, uh, the emergency sirens were set off, uh, we had sent out that, um, emergency notification to provide people guidance to seek shelter in their basements, uh, get out of the, seek shelter under, uh, the lower area of the home if they don't have a basement. And, um, a lot of people were very grateful for that message. If, uh, that area, that derecho had hit our area, uh, that could have potentially saved lives. There's also, um, an informational, uh, avenue called Gov Delivery. Now, Gov Delivery reaches about 60,000 people almost, and, uh, the Everbridge, uh, Evanston Alerts reaches about 38,000 individuals. These are, um, o- options that you can avail yourself of. They're free of charge, and it's, uh, something you can use, uh, by the way of, uh, city's 311 system to, to sign up for, or you can certainly visit the fire department's website, uh, under a city's Office of Emergency Preparedness, and you can, uh, uh, sign yourself up for those, uh, notifications. I would highly recommend it. The, um, as we continue to encounter the more extreme weather that we talked about, uh, community preparedness really involves the whole community. It starts with the individual, but as you can see on a lot of the Eastern Coast communities with the hurricanes and, uh, tropical storm activity that they have, they've really come to grow together and become very resilient. And ultimately, that's the goal of preparedness. Preparedness training and opportunities, uh, that are available in our community are through, um, two sites, one of which is CERT, which is the Community Emergency Response Team, and we also have the Medical Reserve Corps. Uh, both of those organizations, um, you can sign up for and look, uh, look at more information on through the Office of Emergency Preparedness website. Uh, and that is something that, uh, provides a free change, free charge, or free, uh, training, rather, for, um, people who want to become more prepared, understand about how they can not only individually become prepared, how to build a preparedness kit, but also how they can become more engaged in their community and grow, um, based on that whole community approach that was mentioned. Uh, CERT, just last year, uh, just through 30 members, had, uh, devoted over 1,050 hours of their time to be able to support, support the safety and well-being of our community. Um, and as for a city's example of community engagements, um, as the mayor had mentioned, through the COVID response, we, um, have dedicated, uh, countless hours towards response and recovery, as well as community rebuilding efforts. A business recovery is one aspect of that, um, that response. And when we look at, um, some of the things that have been done, in March 18th, uh, we were able to, uh, enable a, uh, emergency declaration. We went to a Level 3, um, EOC activation, which basically set us up for opening our emergency operations center as of March 18th, which is a Wednesday. And since we've been open, that's not something you could say of many communities, uh, we have really devoted countless hours towards making sure that our community is well cared for, and we are continuing to try to address those needs. So, um, in closing, the recent events have helped to remind us of the importance of preparing for disasters and that when we are individually prepared and prepared as a community, we are, uh, more inclined to persevere as a community. Thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you, Chief. And I just want to recognize, uh, all the good work that, that you have done and everybody in the EOC. But I specifically want to recognize you, uh, Chief Cull, um, for, for what you've done. Again, I think people, uh, in the city, I know the city council and I are very pleased with how Evanston's doing so far.
Alert from Microsoft Word.
So far, so far through this pandemic. Um, speaking of the pandemic, I don't have a, a, a formal report, but I just want to give everyone, uh, that's watching just a quick update. Uh, the city of Evanston, uh, continues to do really well, um, thanks to everyone and all of the work. Um, it is a whole, can we, whole of community response and recovery effort, uh, here in the city. Um, we are part of a larger region, so we're part of Region 10, EMS Region 10. That region is, um, has a positivity rate of around 6%. Evanston's positivity rate is around 1 and 1/2%, meaning 1 and 1/2% of the people that are being tested right now are testing positive, uh, for COVID-19. Some days it's a little higher, some days it's a little, a little less. I'm looking at the last, uh, situation report that we produce every Wednesday. Um, and so the, the larger region, again, that we're a part of, which is suburban Cook County, uh, is about 6%. That positivity rate matters. We want to see that, uh, as low as possible. The schools have set a threshold of 3% and below 3% in order to get, uh, children back into the schools, uh, and they are looking at the entire EMS region. And the rationale for that is that we have teachers that live all over this region, not just in Evanston. Um, the infection rate is really important. We track that. It means how many people, uh, does one person infect who has COVID-19? You want that ratio to be under, or that factor to be under 1.0. Uh, it's hovering right around 1, uh, meaning one infected person infects one other person. When that number goes up, that's when you start to see exponential growth of, uh, of the, um, of the disease. Um, our seven, our, our seven-day moving average, this is as of last Wednesday, uh, with cases, was about four cases. Uh, this weekend, we did have two higher numbers for Evanston, uh, 12 one day, nine the other day. A question that I have been receiving, and I know our Alderman and others have been receiving, is the, um, weather northwestern numbers. So when the students come back, whether those numbers are included in the city numbers? And the answer is yes. If those students reside in Evanston, we capture those numbers here. So, so far, again, the students have started to come back. We haven't seen a huge jump in, in those numbers. If you're interested specifically in the university numbers, Northwestern is providing publicly those numbers. And if you just did COVID-19, Northwestern University, uh, that would, that would come up. So, uh, come Wednesday, we'll see a slightly higher, uh, seven-day moving average because of the numbers this weekend. Uh, the seven-day, uh, um, day moving average daily positivity rate was 1.18, uh, as of last Wednesday. So, again, um, really, really positive, uh, news for Evanston. And, uh, last, I'll just leave you with overall cases. We're over 1,000 cases here in Evanston. Um, we have, uh, a metric that we use to measure how we're doing relative to our nearby neighbors is the cases per 10,000. So if we compare ourselves to Skokie in the city of Chicago, we, we are at about 138 cases per 10,000. Skokie's at 216 cases per 10,000, and Chicago's at 273. Um, so on that, on that measurement, uh, we, uh, we continue to do well. I mentioned upfront, uh, the number of cases in our nursing homes or our senior living centers is way down from what it was back in, in the spring. So please keep up all of the good work, um, that you're doing. Wear those masks. We know, uh, that masks make a huge difference, so please wear those masks. Um, and, um, and let's keep taking care of each other. Last thing up on mayor announcements is I just wanted to give a quick update on our city manager recruitment process. Uh, as people know, this summer, we have been, um, asking for applicants who would be interested in being the city manager of our great city. We received 70 applications, uh, that were submitted for the job, our tentative schedule, uh, and we put this out publicly. So if I go through this and you're like, "Okay, what were those dates?" Again, you just go onto the city's website and pull this up. Uh, but on Friday, September 18th, uh, our executive recruiter that we've hired, Gov HR, will be providing a confidential recruitment report to the Evanston City Council. Um, that report lists, again, all the candidates that have applied and everything else. Um, it is confidential. Some people may say, "Well, I don't understand. Why is it confidential? Why can't I see all the names?" Uh, these are professionals from around the country who have applied for jobs. If they're a finalist for their job, for the job, the name will become public. Uh, but until, till then, we owe folks a, a right of some privacy. Um, so that will be with the, uh, with the city council. It is ultimately the city council that will be making the decision about who to hire for the next city manager. Um, we will be having a special, uh, city council executive session, and it will just be for the city council members, um, on September 24th with Gov HR, where we will, uh, select the first round of candidates. Uh, at that meeting, um, the week of September 28th, the city council will conduct interviews with those semifinalists, so to speak. The pool of candidates will then be reduced, uh, during the executive session meeting. Um, and then October 5th, remaining candidates, so the finalists, will participate in a second round of interviews with city council and community panels, um, as well as a community forum. So we'll talk about the setup of those, uh, community members that we get involved in this process. There will be an opportunity for all community members to meet the final, the final list, the final couple candidates. Uh, and then the week of October 12th, uh, in executive session, the, the council hopes to select the next city, uh, manager, and, uh, Gov HR will, our executive recruiter, enter into negotiations. And then, uh, we will hold a special meeting on October 19th to announce, uh, and approve a contract for the new city manager. So that's, that's the schedule. That's where we stand right now. Um, and, um, we will, uh, we will talk more, uh, about, um, about this in the, in the coming weeks. So that wraps up, uh, the announcements that I had. I know they were long today. Um, we haven't met for a month, so there's a lot to cover. I'm now going to turn it over to the city manager for any announcements she has.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no announcements.
Yeah, that was quick. That makes up for my long announcements. Thank you. How about Clerk Reed?
Yes, I have, uh, quick, you know, it's gonna be kind of a repeating announcement, uh, between now and Election Day, uh, to make sure that, um, folks, um, are, are aware and, uh, of everything going on with the election. So again, I just want to remind folks, um, that if you want to get information on voting in, uh, the upcoming November election, you can go to, uh, the city clerks, uh, go to the city's website, and you can go to the city clerks page and find election information. And in that section, you'll, you'll, uh, find out that the early voting begins, uh, October 19th, so you'll be able to early vote here at the Civic Center. Folks are recommending, uh, you know, voting before Election Day. Um, so that's either early voting, voting by mail, um, or, you know, other methods. Um, so, as I said, I'm sorry, I just want to get this up as well. Um, so, a- as I said, uh, early voting will be weekdays, um, from 8:30 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. So you'll be able to early vote at the Civic Center in room G300, um, on Saturdays from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m., and as well as on Sundays from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m., uh, during the early voting period. Uh, you'll just need a government-issued ID, or you will not need a government-issued ID to early vote, uh, but you do want to bring, uh, some form of identification. Uh, it's helpful to bring, uh, driver's license, state ID, student ID, employee ID, credit card, social security card, birth certificate, uh, identifying information. Uh, for mail-in voting, uh, you do want to make sure, uh, that's gonna be fairly, uh, it seems, uh, you know, some polling has said that, uh, you know, around 75% of Democrats plan to, uh, vote early, and Evanston is a highly democratic area, so we can expect that a lot of folks here are likely going to be utilizing mail-in voting. Uh, so to do so, you want to download and print the, uh, mail-in application. You can fill it out online, or you can print it from the city clerk's website, and then mail it to the Cook County Clerk. Um, and you can contact the Cook County Clerk at, uh, we'll give the number now, uh, 312-603-0946, or the Evanston City Clerk's office if you have any questions. Um, the debt, the last date to request a mail-in ballot is October 29th. Um, I, I would recommend not waiting until then. If you, if you want to do a mail-in ballot, get the request in now. Um, and, you know, otherwise, you know, try to get it in before early October. It would be my recommendation for, uh, mid-October, and, uh, otherwise, early vote or wait until Election Day if, if you so choose. Um, again, you can reach out to the Cook County Clerk or the city clerk if you have not received your mail-in ballot, um, uh, by mid-October. And of course, uh, Election Day is November 3rd, and you can vote at your local polling place. Uh, a list of local polling places is available with the Cook County Clerk's office. Uh, I do not believe that we've had any, uh, as of yet, any changes in polling places, um, since the last election, since, uh, since March. Um, and then lastly, uh, for the municipal elections that are coming up, I just want to remind folks that you can go to the, uh, uh, city clerks' page, um, and again, uh, under Reports and Presentations, and you can, uh, get, uh, information on filing for the upcoming municipal elections. Uh, also, the Roundtable, uh, I think created a helpful article, uh, that expresses a lot of the stuff, as well as information that's available, uh, on, uh, the city clerk's page and through a short informational video that we've created. Um, that, oh, uh, there's one announcement, an email that we received, um, from a resident asking to be removed from public comment as the item, uh, that they wished to discuss was held in committee, and that was Mr. Miller, Mayor Hagerty.
Mr. Who?
Uh, Mr. Miller, Pete Miller.
Okay, got it.
And that, um, concludes my comments.
Great. Thank you, Clerk Reed. Okay, we're gonna go ahead now and move into public comment. Um, Luke Stowe, if I'm looking at this list correctly, there's a lot of names on it, but several have, uh, been marked off. So presumably, these people have taken themselves off. Is that correct? I want to be sure I calculate the time correctly.
Yeah, Mayor, this is about, um, 11 pub- public speakers.
Wait, that's it? I, I have 22.
Now, some of those refer P&amp;D or AP&amp;W.
Can, can you help me with the list thing? Cause I'm not sure I'm working on the right list. Do I, do you start with Ray Friedman and Rick Nelson?
That's correct.
What do you end with?
Uh, Renee Payton?
I got Tina Payton. Oh, but that's interesting. You got Renee Payton, but then I have Chris Van Avermaet, Kenneth Chai, Tina Payton, Carlos Sutton, Marco Radman, Angie Radman, Susanna Radman.
I'm, I'm showing up at 13 people for a state council.
Okay. Um, so I want you to jump in if I, if I'm going off. There's something screwy with these lists that you sent, that we're working off of for some reason. Um, okay, so, uh, if we've got, uh, 11 people, as, uh, as Luke Stowe says on his list, uh, we're gonna give each person up to three minutes, if you need three minutes, per our rules. We set aside 45 minutes total. Uh, the speakers that I've got, uh, are Ray Friedman will be up first, then Rick Nelson, and then Betty Esther. Welcome, Ray.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty and, and everybody in city council. It's been a long time, uh, long summer. Um, basically, I wanted to talk, can you hear me okay?
We can. Welcome. Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Um, basically, I wanted to talk about the budget. Um, so that's a big issue that, that I have a lot of questions on. And I just wanted to say thank you to Kate and Kimberly for their first budget meeting. Um, however, I saw it last year three times. This is the fourth time. Um, basically, I'm going there to ask questions, not to answer questions. So, um, uh, what, what I want to say is, um, that the residents really need to have the opportunity, um, to ask questions, but more important, uh, we need to have them answered. Okay? Like a dialogue. I know it's a surprise. Um, so we need to have some kind of format for the residents to have questions answered. I just have a few, uh, budget questions here. Um, is City Hall still closed? Um, and when will it reopen? And how much have we saved by, um, City Hall being closed? Um, and I asked, um, Erica this question at the ward meeting, but, um, for everybody, how many employees do we currently have? Uh, last count, I guess it was 800, and I think there was maybe 50 that were laid off. So how many employees do we currently have now? Um, so, um, did we have any summer activities? How much money did we save from the lack of summer activities? Um, it seems our payroll, month, actually, it's not month- It seems our payroll, month, actually, it's not monthly, it looks like bi-weekly payroll, is about 2.8 million, about 5.6 million per month. And just wondering, does that include police and fire? I thought that it did. Bills list for August 11th was 7.3 million. That's for bills. Normally, it's around 2.8. And the bills list for today is 7.7 million. Wondering why this is? Again, the bills usually around 2.8. Do we still owe any money for Robert Crown? And how much was the total cost to build Robert Crown? Have we, have we relocated all the tenants that we had housed in hotels? I know you were talking about relocating tenants there. And how much did it cost? And how much money did we get repaid from government grants for those tenants to be housed? Okay, so last couple of questions.
We're out of, we're out of three minutes. We're out of three minutes.
Can I ask two more questions?
Real quick, two more questions.
Two more questions, thank you very much. Okay, how much is our total bond debt? And how much is our debt service per month or per year? And that should do it for now.
Thank, thank you, Ray. So I'm going to ask the
All right, thanks.
Thank, thank you. Good, thank you. It's good, good, good to have you back.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to ask
Good to be back.
I'm going to ask the manager if she would just keep track of those questions because I think those are all reasonable questions. And when we do, you do the budget presentation to the city council, if you can make sure that you get those questions addressed, I think that would be great.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night, Ray. Next up, we've got Rick Nelson, then Betty Esther, then Misty Whittenberg.
Good evening, I'm Rick Nelson of Environmental Justice Evanston. I spoke earlier this evening during the public comment period of the Planning and Development Committee on the Environmental Justice Resolution that is now before the city council tonight. Since the Planning and Development Committee approved the EJ resolution, I believe it was seven to zero, I'm going to actually keep this very brief. I'd like to thank the Planning and Development Committee members for their strong support of the resolution and encourage the adoption of the EJ resolution by the full city council later this evening. This EJ resolution has been a labor of love for our EJE committee, and it's actually very exciting for us to see our efforts come into fruition. And that's all I have to say, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you, Rick, and thanks for all you do and your groups do here in Evanston on the environment.
Thank you.
We got next, Betty Esther, then Misty Whittenberg, then
Mayor Neil Weingard is going to speak for Betty Esther.
Okay.
Yes.
Welcome, Mayor.
Hello, I am Neil Weingard. I'm a third ward resident. Mayor Hagerty, I'm looking forward to your presentation about the 90-day use of force pledge. To set the stage, I'd like to provide some use of force data since you became mayor. This data was required from the Citizens Network of Protections FOIA request. 78% of use of force against Evanston residents was officer-initiated. While Evanston's black population sits at around 16%, 17%, 70% of officer use of force was against them. When CMP originally FOIAed these documents, they came with race redacted. There's no legal reason for that. So when you consider use of force, you might want to use, look at it through your eyes considering this is systemic racism. As the numbers suggest, you should. Regarding improving data collection and access, the data itself is not an end to the solution. The data is a tool. And we're finding discrepancies with the dashboard still, 11 months after we pointed them out to Chief Cook. We also discovered Chief Cook's own year-end report to city council doesn't match the dashboard. It also doesn't match the Illinois Department of Transportation data that they sent. Although, all three parts of those data should be the same. So which data is correct? Who's ever seen data accuracy? Because you've appointed and approved his year-end report every single time, and it's not accurate. So, that said, you seem to ignore CMP. You didn't invite us to any of the policing meetings. We seem to be the only ones doing oversight.
Thank, thank you. Next up, we've got Misty Whittenberg, then Linda Del Bosque, then Mike Vasilko.
Hi, Misty Whittenberg. I'm speaking to the public's concerns, which we've expressed for more than a year, of the city's HR practices. Last November, I FOIAed, I hope that's not my time.
No, no, go ahead.
HR records for one case. In response, the law department sent me the entire unredactable HR log showing the city hires an outside law firm exclusively to investigate black employees and does not log HR complaints filed against its senior most white male officials. Because members of this council entirely disregarded the public's correct concerns admonishing us for even raising them, I filed an ethics complaint and I invited the clerk to join. To clarify, the clerk received that HR log when I sent it to the board, city, its attorneys and parties in March, following up on my unanswered requests on closed hearing and filing of evidence, which I emphasized was sensitive, notifying I was able to unredact it and attached specifically the HR log. Only the city's attorney responded, instructing increasingly hostilely that we were limited to presenting our evidence in public hearing. In 10 months, in the entirety of this, my disclosure of it, I disclosed it to nobody else except on September 2nd, when I disclosed it to Jennifer Lynn, following the clerk's cross-examination of her as the opposing witness. And the clerk presented the HR log, asking Lynn to confirm the disparate racialized treatment. Mistaking Lynn's concern of its public presentation as genuine, I forwarded her my now six-month-old notice to the city of this unredactable log and our limitation to its public presentation. She did not respond. Instead, after I, reading my email apparently, she reappeared in the open meeting to address the unredactions publicly, causing every viewer to know that HR log was unredactable. Typically, the city has held the clerk as responsible for FOIA violations by city departments, and without that available, and I'm not joking, the city sued me for violating FOIA and OMA. I am not a public body. But more importantly, rather than address its demonstrably racist HR practices, the city filed a restraining order against me from disclosing it. But I did not have to, because the city did. In your recklessness, you publicly published the entire unredactable HR log, which thanks to Lynn's public performance, everyone knows is unredactable, and other people have now accessed and unredacted it. I had no idea the city did not believe me or did not know why this log was unredactable. Nobody reached out to me. I would have at any time been happy to help you with these demonstrates. I don't know what you want me to do. I don't even know if I'm allowed to now, but if I am, in executive session or whatever, and I'm not going through my attorney, I'm not paying for it to, so figure that out. But if you want me to, let me know. I'm certainly happy to show you.
All right, thank, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Misty. Next up, we've got Linda Del Bosque, then Mike Vasilko, then Joe Roth.
All right, good evening, Mayor and the council. Thank you, Mayor Hagerty, for honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. I appreciate that. As president of ELBA, the Evanston Latiniz Business Alliance, we are, just wanted to say thank you. As a group, we are continuing to empower one another and grow our businesses, and we're growing our board of directors and beginning our 501(c)(3) process for nonprofits to begin giving grants to our own businesses and helping them sustain themselves. So we also have Angela McConner from Jameson Sotheby's on the phone as well. And so that's what we're talking about today. We just wanted to say thank you for honoring and acknowledging Hispanic Heritage Month for the city of Evanston, and we look forward to working with the city. Thank you.
Great, thank, thank you, Linda, for all you and your groups are doing. Next up, we've got Mike Vasilko, Joe Roth, and Doreen Price.
Good evening, I'm looking for some clarification, I guess. It was reported that the interim city manager stated at the second ward meeting that the budget deficit had grown dramatically and that the police department budget would be the department that takes the greatest reduction accordingly. So I guess I, I'd like to have that clarified, because if the reports are true, I have to ask, what authority does Erica Storey have to make such definitive statements about where budget cuts will occur before the city council even has an opportunity to deliberate? You know, Storey's support for slashing the police department financially undermines the police department's ability to protect Evanston's citizens. The city budget website has a separate link for the police department budget so it can be scrutinized. Where are the comparative budget breakdowns for community development and for parks and recreation? The city manager's office, economic development, planning and zoning, the law department, and others. All of those budgets should be equally scrutinized. They should be posted just as the police department budget was. These departments, or at least their leadership, are reckless with city funds, wasting precious financial resources. These department budgets deserve equal scrutiny. It's also telling that the council has made no mention of the Los Angeles assassination attempt of two police officers. This act is a direct result of defund activists who defame officers as racist cops. Los Angeles is not Evanston. I know that. But Evanston residents are using the same derogatory language. The second item I wanted to bring up is the schedule of meetings for citizen participation and the city manager's search. It's really, I mean, you went through a very itemized description of why we can't be involved earlier, but it's really almost useless to have Evanston residents participate in literally one, one event that, that is supposed to influence how that, how that decision is going to be made. So it's really not enough, and we need more participation for the city manager's search. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Mike. Just want to clarify something, because I've seen it elsewhere too. The 2020 budget has not yet been unveiled. The finance department, city manager's office is working through it. So when different numbers of the projected deficit for 2021, excuse me if I just said 2020, the 2021 budget have been used, because I know there was an analyst speaking at the first ward meeting, I know Ms. Storey spoke at the second ward meeting, they are still working through what their projected deficit is. So the council hasn't, and I haven't even seen it. So they're trying to be transparent and sort of work with people, but I don't want people thinking, oh, the deficit's getting bigger because they gave one number. They are, they are still working through those numbers. But all of that will be unveiled, and ultimately, it'll be the city council, not Ms. Storey, that decides how this money's going to be budgeted, as happens every year here in the city. Next up, we've got Joe Roth, and then Doreen Price. Welcome, Joe.
Mayor Hagerty Alderman, good evening. Joe Roth, North Shore Barrington Association of Realtors. Regarding the proposed eviction moratorium, we're going to ask for an amendment to that. And our goal really here is to expedite these resolutions for the benefit of tenants and landlords alike. As written, this moratorium takes effect after all of the other eviction bans. We believe that action should be happening sooner. Housing providers shouldn't be learning about a tenant's COVID-19 impact six months or more after they stop paying rent. Instead, tenants with a COVID-19 impact should have these conversations with their housing providers now. By encouraging these actions, we'll make sure that all of this doesn't hit MTO at the same time. And more importantly, we'll be able to provide access to financial support to tenants soon. You know, one possible way to look at this would be eliminating this seven-day negotiating period or waiving it under certain circumstances where the, the tenant has, prior to this ordinance going into effect, tried to attempt to negotiate some sort of resolution. You know, maybe even limiting that to where they've referred it to MTO intervention, again, before this moratorium goes into effect. But really, the whole point of it is, you know, let's get these groups talking together now. In speaking with a number of housing providers, I, I think they're feeling some frustration as well when they can't, when they can't reach a tenant, when they cannot get the tenant to work with them on coming together and solving this problem. But I am happy to provide any additional information or be of assistance. Thanks.
Okay, thank, thank you, thank you, Joe. And I know Alderman Fleming's got some, some thoughts and response, but let's wait until we get to the item on the agenda, and then, well, I'm sure somebody will pull it off, and we can have that discussion. We may call on you then if we need some more clarification or anything. Next up, we've got Doreen Price and then Mary Rosinski.
Hi, can you hear me?
Welcome, Doreen.
Hi, hi, Mayor and city council and everyone else who's listening in. These are good discussions, so thank you. The, the, what kind of comes together for me, because I came with a one-sentence statement, but I have two other sentences I've added, after listening to what Chief Cole said, which is like amazing, I, I'm so impressed with what she's been able to accomplish and her desire to have us be ready for disasters. And when you think about disasters, you think of trauma, and we talk about police, we're wondering about trauma. So that's how this all comes together, by listening to what people have said. So my comment started out with SP, regarding SP1, and given the trauma experienced by the community, has de-escalation training included trauma recognition and sensitivity throughout all police interaction, but when you think about it, all city interactions as well. With regard to the city manager, can we, can we look specifically, besides the other, you know, increasing input from the residents, but can we look specifically at sensitivity to trauma and socioeconomic disaster readiness and remediation? Again, thinking of Chief Cole, remediation committed to environmental justice, considering the proclamation and well-being. So actually taking a more proactive approach to disasters because they've happened in the past and will happen in the future, which leads to the third part. And then, well, reserves, which we're talked about initially in the 101, a great session again, in terms of information, so will reserves increase to support socioeconomic and environmental justice initiatives? So thanks to everybody for that.
All right, thank you, Doreen. Next up, we've got Mary Rosinski, then Tina Payton, then Renee Payton.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good, welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to say thanks for, I'm so glad we're supporting the environmental resolution. That is great. But I'm here to speak on SP2, economic development. Regarding the strategic sale of owner prop, owned property in that January or whenever study, I feel like we need a long-term plan for comprehensive pro forma financial statements before we buy or sell any real estate. Because selling our real estate at this time without that full analysis of the cost and benefits is not a well-thought-out plan. We're in a budget hole now. More than ever, we need a well-thought-out creative solutions. And selling city assets, cutting services, throwing out the zoning book to get one-time building permits, and closing libraries is not a long-term solution. It's a short, short-term plan. I feel like we need to stop spending money we don't have and moving, and we have to need to stop moving forward on projects without the adequate funding. And this, and I think that this idea of moving to downtown and selling the Civic Center without a entire cost-benefit analysis is not a good idea. It reminds me very much of how we got ourselves into a $50 million Robert Crown project, and that's costing us $4 million a year now, because we started out on a $20 million a year project on that, which would have been about a million four to $2 million project debt service, and we funded the whole thing. And that was so bad. And we could have thought to move the Civic Center and incorporate the Civic Center and the Robert Crown project into one thing. So we need to just look at stuff. The downtown real estate's the most expensive real estate in the area. So if anything, I mean, maybe we should move it over closer to areas that aren't so expensive. So I just want us to be more fiscally responsible when we're making our decisions and don't look for short-term infusions. I appreciate what everyone does. I know it's complicated, but I think this town is filled. I appreciate what everyone does. I know it's complicated, but I think this town is filled with people who can really give us some great ideas and we can get out of this budget hole with the plan. So thank you so much and I look forward to seeing you. That's all.
Thank, thank you, Mary. All right, next up, we've got Tina Payden, and then I have Renee Payden as the last speaker. Correct me if that's not right. Welcome, Tina. Are you with us, Tina?
Mayor, I think she's on, but she's on via phone. She may hit star six.
Tina, if you could hit star six.
Hello?
Hi, hi, Tina, welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'm so glad I finally got on. I hope everyone's well. I did have a comment. I wasn't able to get on the planning and development meeting, and I'm not sure what happened today, but I want to speak about P4. And I'm opposed to P4. The person that is the applicant at BZ Auto has been a very terrible neighbor. He's never come to speak to me about wanting to put this weed dispensary or delivery service across the way. I thought that we were also trying to be fair and equitable to minorities, black people that have applied. I don't think that there's enough conversation about this property. There was only two other people at the zoning meeting that spoke, and I don't believe that it should proceed without more discussion. It affects my property negatively and I will have to put cameras and security around my building. And I think that the neighbors should be considered more, especially since I'm directly across the street from the property. I also want to make a comment about the zoning in the first ward. I think it's very unfair that, that you're considering changing the zoning for Alderman Fifth Ward, and you just do it in one meeting when you do not do anything about the zoning in the Fifth Ward. At, at Emerson and Jackson, you continue the meeting indefinitely, and we were trying to get it changed from R5 to R5A. And the people of the ward have been trying to do this for years and we have been ignored. And that's in the Fifth Ward, and now it looks like the ghetto in the Fifth Ward. I have people that don't want to rent because it's all boarded up, and you have absentee landlords in all wards. And how is it fair that the First Ward gets heard and they get privileged right away? Is this because they're white and we're black and we do not get any justice? No justice, no peace. Black lives matter. Please hear what we say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Next up, we've got Renee Payden.
Mayor, I don't think Renee Payden's on the same call.
Do you have anyone else on your list?
I believe that's it.
Okay. All right, then. Thank, thank you, everybody, for signing up for public comment and sharing your views and your perspectives on a variety of issues. We're now going to move to the agenda this evening. First up is special orders of business. We have two special orders of business. One is an update for folks on the 90-day use of force pledge that I made, and the other is an update on the economic development here in the city and the strategy given the pandemic. So Alderman Ru Simmons, would you mind moving for discussion SP1?
Sorry about that, absolutely. SP1, staff recommend city council review and discuss Mayor Hagerty's 90-day plan. Excuse me, 90-day plan, use of force pledge for discussion.
For a second.
Second.
All right, okay, so this item is open for discussion. So I just wanted to give everybody an update on this. So the list is long, right? Breonna Taylor, George Floyd, Jacob Blake, most recently, have raised serious questions about use of force by police departments across this country. I signed up for the Obama Foundation's Commitment to Action pledge, which was a pledge to review police force use of, use of force policies to engage our communities, community in a discussion on policing and use of force, to report findings back to the community, and then to work to reform the community's use of force policies. Where, where we are now is we have had the police take a look at the use of force policies, and I know right away some people say, well, wait a second, they aren't the ones. We've had some community conversations about use of force altogether. We had nine, nine topics covered in our use of for, or excuse me, in our policing series this summer in July, in August, covering a variety of topics, including use of force and body cameras, training, youth in our police, the Citizen Police Review Commission, as well as the Office of Professional Standards and those reviews, calls for service, community outreach, alternatives to arrest, alternative policing methods, which is something that our Human Services Committee has also been looking at, as well as the police budget. So we've had a lot of conversations that people have tuned, tuned into and have been a part of. We also, as part of this use of force review, had an outside review done of Evanston's use of force policies. And I want to thank Northwestern University and the Institute for Policy Research, specifically the Northwestern Neighborhood and Network Initiative, who reviewed our use of force policies pro bono. They didn't charge our city anything. They do this around the country. So we're able to use this, this expertise that they have. And they've produced a really good 12-page report. The report just came out recently. The chief of police has reviewed it. I have reviewed this report. In term, and what the, what the report says, if I can just touch on a couple points. In terms of use of force, I mean, interesting things for people to know. And I've asked the chief to look for the 2019 statistics. For some reason, they weren't in here. In 2018, Evanston Police Department used force 27 times. The incidents with the highest numbers involved weaponless impact and the use of tasers. Use of force data available in the public data portal only goes back to 2017. And I think that this gets to a point that one of our public commentators made about there's an opportunity for the city to do a better job in providing data out there to our public and being more transparent. And that is one thing that definitely came up in this report done by Northwestern. In the last 10 years, there have been four uses of deadly force here in Evanston. So in the last 10, 10 years, four uses, three of those were someone was shot and one was a fatality. I want to talk just quickly about questions that were often asked that have come up because of what we've seen around the country. In Evanston, our use of force does not include using chokeholds or strangleholds. Those are, are banned here in Evanston. We require de-escalation and have de-escalation training for our officers here. The council and the police department have worked on that quite a bit. There is a duty to intervene. If an officer sees another officer who is doing something that is excess force or not in any way compliant with our policies, there is a duty and an expectation to intervene. Our officers are expected to use force continuum, which is a force continuum that restricts the most severe types of force to the most extreme situations and creates clear policy restrictions on the use of each police weapon and tactic. Officers are required to report each time they use force or threaten to use force against civilians. The recommendations in this report, and the chief again has seen this, and he's here to answer and answer any questions that we may have tonight. But I'm going to make a recommendation to the council. The recommendations that they made was required that officers use force as a last resort, that we basically have a sanctity of life principle. And, and they have some commentary in the report about that. Provide a clear statement on policy for non-compliance. Make it very clear to officers, if you're not complying with our policies, what the ramifications are of that. Recommendation number three was provide specific guidance on the principles of proportionality. What's, what's appropriate, you know, objectively. And so, so they have a whole section on that. A commitment to de-escalate, which again gets back to proportionality. They want to have some stronger information and statements in the, in the policies, the written policies on a duty to intercede. Okay. They want to prohibit the use of force on any restrained person. All right. And again, we have seen that too often around the country where somebody is handcuffed and then there's force being used on them. So they want a specific on that. Number seven, ensure additional protections for vulnerable populations. Okay, whether that's children, the elderly, individuals with pre-existing conditions, mental illness. Reinforce the need to provide and seek medical care immediately after if use of force is used. And then improving data collection and access to that information, getting to accountability and oversight. This report, as I mentioned, just was completed. And my recommendation to the council, council, and the chief is here to answer any questions that people have right now. The purpose of, of this pledge and everything was, in this moment of time, every municipality ought to be looking at their use of force and saying, is this appropriate for our community standards and everything else, and honestly, for human decency and so forth and dignity? Is this appropriate? And then it's actually to, you know, make reforms, make, make improvements. My suggestion is that this be placed, this report that I'm referring to, be placed on the Human Services Agenda at the next, you know, appropriate meeting, that Northwestern researchers that were involved in doing this come before the Human Services Committee and, and present this. That the council and the police chief have an opportunity at that meeting to discuss in more details when you have a chance to really see all these recommendations. You know, the recommendations. And, and I think, I think that's a good next step. The other thing that I think, I'm thinking of doing is doing another police seri, not series, but session on this report, okay, for the public, where they can ask questions and everything else. So I'm thinking of doing that as well. I can tell you the police chief, who I've been working closely with, is very, very open and supportive of, you know, taking a serious look at all of this, listening to these recommendations, listening to all of us, and, and making appropriate changes. So, and I have the chief here if anybody has any questions. So chief, let me, I guess, let me just ask you, is there anything else you want to add to what I just said? And then we'll open up to any questions or comments, council members.
Yes, good, good afternoon, Mayor. City Manager Erica Storey, Clerk Reed, and City Council. The Evanston Police Department has been proactive in looking at our policy because we're in a different era of law enforcement. We're in a post-George Floyd era of law enforcement. And that requires everyone in America to be vigilant about readdressing some of the things that we have done historically for years that was unfair to black and brown people and that has caused harm throughout America. A year and a half ago, we developed a relationship with the E and Three Policy Center at Northwestern, where I had two PhD students from Northwestern here to analyze in their dissertation how the police interacted with the public. And that, that basically went, they would go to the interactions with the police officer, and then they would do their survey after the incident with the citizen to find out their level of satisfaction that they feel the police officer was proper in his redress of a situation. From there, we developed a relationship with Professor Andrew Papa Christos, who has, he's the sociology head over at Northwestern and a leading expert on police policy reform. So we wanted to take the policy review outside of the police department and have it looked at by an independent agency. And that independent agency is one of the leading universities in the world in terms of policy research and American law enforcement. And we were able, and I'm very thankful that we were able to get our, our policy looked at by such esteemed people as Solidae McGrath. She's a lawyer there. Andrew Papa Christos, who's the head of the sociology department, and a PhD student by the name of Jonathan Sun. And this report isn't complete yet because in the report, they recommend that we look at some of the other issues that pertain to the use of force, such as controlled devices and techniques, officer-involved shootings, firearms, vehicle pursuits, conducted electrical weapons or tasers, as most people know. And they recommend that we get all of these policies in sync with the recommendations that they put forth. And what is more importantly is they specify that we should have some public input in addressing some questions. You know, this is a very astute population in Evanston, and there are many people that can contribute to the problem-solving process that the Evanston Police Department is currently engaged in. So I've asked the mayor if, you know, if he would consider the additional question and answer session, whereas we can get that phase of this problem-solving process addressed. It's a lot of work involved, but we are committed to doing this. And if, if you get a look at this report, the, the E and Three stated that Evanston has a solid foundation of use of force, meaning that we do have an industry standard use of force policy, but it's not post-George Floyd. And, you know, post-George Floyd requires us to look at how we've been addressing force and where we want force in our town to be in the future. So I'm committed to that. And more importantly, you know, I agree with Mr. Wine Guy, you know, I'm, I'm currently looking at, there must be a way for us to extract the data out of our CAD system and our RMS system that will automatically populate the variables that we need to measure for public consumption without us having to put it in. And the reason we fell behind on that is because, you know, the young lady that was managing that out of the IT department, she's out on maternity leave, and I'm not quite sure. sure if she's coming back or not. But we're looking at a program that will extract the data into our dashboard automatically where the public can consume that. So we got a lot of work to do. I'm not resistant to this change. This change is long overdue and the sanctity of life is the most important thing in anything we do as law enforcement. People's lives matter and it's our responsibility to utilize force that is commensurate with the type of situation they may be in. We need to look at, in terms of our discipline, how the officer acted from the inception of the call all the way through to the use of force. Not just the use of force, but all of the steps he took to de-escalate that situation up to the actual use of force. We've already started, again, two officers going to de-escalation training to be instructors. So we are moving, we're going to get public input and we're going to try to be transparent to the point that the public is satisfied. And I thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Chief. And one thing I just want to stress to everybody on the council and anyone that's watching, policies are one thing, right? Words on, words on a piece of paper and they're important, but then you have to train to that, you have to exercise against that, you have to monitor and manage people to make sure they are, are conducting themselves in accordance with policies.
Yes.
And that's mentioned, and that's mentioned in this report too. So it's a good report. We want to get it out to the public. My suggestion is, again, we put it into the human services committee, which is where all of our policing matters go. Alderman Wilson, did you have something? And I know Alderman Fleming has your hand up.
Just a few things. Chief, I also heard you speak the other day and I appreciate the, the idea of focusing on the, on the sanctity of life as, as I think I'm going to call it a starting point. Mayor, I think it's a good idea to take it to that committee so that we can get some more information out to the public and the community. With regard to the policy changes, I think that we as a council and for the most part as a community are not only receptive to these changes, but expecting the changes. And I think that's great. But one thing I'd like to see as we go through the process of implementation is to make sure that we're educating people on, on why these are appropriate and important changes and to focus on the fact that these changes are going to result in a safer community. There are people on social media, there'll be women in the country, people all around, who are attempting to take efforts in making these changes and twist them into something that they're, number one, not, and number two, serving as tools to create fear. These are not anything to be fearful of, but to the contrary, these are, these are policy changes that we are undertaking to build a safer community and, and to protect all of members of the community. And I just would like to see whether it's the N3 group or the police department, make sure that we include that component in discussing that, just so that everybody's clear on these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I'm glad it's coming to human services because I was kind of disappointed not to see the 12-page report myself. But when you come to human services, chief, I would like to expand on that conversation. If you could bring to human services kind of what the definition of use of force is, I think it continues when I speak to people and they're frustrated with the police, they're not necessarily telling me about, you know, these, these, these life or death threats, right? They're not necessarily talking about a gun being pulled or tased. They're talking about these very slight things that happen to them when they're stopped, when they feel like, you know, particularly our African-American community, they feel like, you know, they are stopped for no reason, they are frisked, they are spoken to in a certain way. As you know, I've been there to watch plenty of police video. There are times when I know our policies are not broken, but I can definitely understand with why a complaint was written or why people are frustrated. So I think, as I already said, you know, policies are great and I'm always for improving our policies, but if we are not implementing them, if people are not being disciplined, if we're not tracking correctly, it doesn't really make a difference what's on the paper when we have officers out in the street and people feel frustrated for a variety of reasons. I will say, chief, you know, you and I have talked, I think you've done, in my opinion, a better job than our last commander in terms of disciplining officers and really watching those things and really trying to correct for those things. But as we know, we have a way to go and it's really unfortunate that in 2020, it's taken the really public painful death of a man on TV for us to now decide we need to look at these things. I think an shame on us as a nation. But, you know, there's many more questions I have that I'll, I'll address in human services when the report comes out. Mayor, hopefully when you have that conversation, if it's before human services, you can let people know there'll be a further discussion there so they can thank you to participate for those who can't get on Facebook. But I'm, I'm really interested in us digging down into these, you know, more mild and not necessarily use of force infractions that people feel like they're having in our community that are, that is causing the mistrust and the frustration, right? And making sure that we are cognizant of that and not just focusing on, you know, when someone's life is in danger at the hands of a police officer. And the last thing I'll comment on is that duty to intervene, which we know is big in the George Floyd case. And as you know, Alderman and Suffer and I came to watch a video, had a very good conversation with you about that body cam video. And I would just like to think that even that type of behavior by one of our officers is something that someone else is going to intervene in, right? And it's not, it has to go to a deadly force kind of situation. So I'm looking forward to the conversation. Thank you for acknowledging CMP and their call for more data and helping to explain why that's not accurate. I'll be keeping up with that as well to make sure our numbers reflect, you know, whatever they need to reflect in terms of from state or from whatever CAD system and I think RPS that you mentioned, that those numbers are readily available on the dashboard we created and we don't have to wait for, you know, like you said, a young lady who's out on maternity leave so that our numbers aren't matching up. We can figure out a better system to make that work a little more automatically. So thank you.
Yes, thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman Fleming.
This policy review, if I may, Mayor, you know, it's for the safety of the public as well as, as the police officer. You know, I think my predecessor, Chief Ederton, did a great job in terms of the, the quality of police officer we have. We have really good police officers here in Evanston. We're not absolute and I don't know a police department or any profession that is, but I can say that we do recognize as managers here that, and looking at what's coming down through PERF, the Justice and Policing Act, the John Jay Center of Criminal Justice, Noble, International Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, it's going to be concrete change that will be put forth across all of America. So we're getting a head start on what is needed and I'm sure it'll be more added once the policy is legislated in Congress and in the House. So I appreciate everybody in this town that has a perspective and I respect everyone's perspective, but I'm here to give you a professional opinion and that's what I promise to do. And thank you very much.
Thank, thank, thank you, thank you, chief. And I do know that the police department and, and city council did do a look at use of force after, and made changes after the Lawrence Crosby incident. So, you know, it has, you know, these things don't happen and we just ignore them. I think we keep trying to look at them and make sure we've got policies that are, are safe for our officers, are safe for the public and respectful of the public. Any other, any other questions or comments on this? So we're going to move to economic development next on the agenda. All right. So thank, thank you, chief. Thank you, Alderman, that had the questions and stuff. This will, I'm asking the city manager if she will put, work with the chair of human services and figure out the right meeting to put this on the agenda. And the report that we referenced here will be made public for everyone to, to see and discuss. All right, next up, let's see, Alderman Fleming, could you introduce your move SP2?
SP2, which is Economic Development Update and Strategy, staff is seeking, seeks to provide city council with an update on economic climate in Evanston prior to and during COVID-19. This is for action to accept and place on file. Second?
All right, thank you. All right. So this is going to be open. I'm going to turn this to the interim city manager to start us off.
Thank you very much. I have asked staff to put together the report that you see in your packet this evening and also to provide a presentation this evening for us to get a better understanding of the current environment that we're experiencing after the onset of the pandemic. You know, not knowing how long this may last and not knowing how many of our businesses will be able to make it throughout the course of this pandemic is something that's very concerning to myself, the staff, the city council and the community. What makes Evanston unique and special is not just our residents and our amazing parks and amenities, but also the quality of our small businesses and the diversity that they represent. So it's really critical that we figure out ways to support our businesses and provide a climate to which they can succeed. This is going to be important now more than ever because every little bit helps. So, so far, the city council has made really progressive decisions and supports that have been provided to the businesses to help alleviate some of the conditions that have been placed on them, and they've been able to operate very creatively. And we hope to help them continue to do that for some time. But it's also important to be not only optimistic but realistic. And realistically, we will have some big challenges in the next 12 to 18 months. A lot of the federal programs that are providing support to businesses will run out and then we will have some, some businesses that will probably not be able to make it. So in that spirit, I've asked Paul Zalmzak, our economic development manager, and Paulina Martinez, our interim deputy city manager, and Katie Bonin, our economic development specialist, to present this presentation this evening to give the council and the community an idea of what was happening before we came to be where we are now, what we can expect coming over the course of the next year, and some suggestions for some policy decisions and other things that we can do to help support our business climate within the city of Evanston. So with that, I will hand it over to Paul. Paul, if you're talking.
Can't hear you, Paul.
We can't hear you, Paul.
I believe he's going to connect from his mobile.
Paulina, are you going to be screen sharing or is Paul?
Paul is going to share the screen.
We'll just give him another minute.
All right, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Paul. Welcome.
Great. Is there an echo?
A little, yeah.
This has not been a problem to date, as you know. I am really sorry. I don't know what to do about the echo, but I will try.
Paul, I can share the screen and if you want to just connect from your phone so that it can go.
Thank you. All right, please, please confirm you can see and hear me. Thank you. I apologize for that rough start. This has not been a problem to, to date, so I apologize for that. I wanted to share with you before we start this presentation that this not intended to be a comprehensive plan itself. Really meant to be an introduction to what, you know, the initial steps that we needed to take. There's going to be people that I've forgotten to mention this evening, or there's going to be ideas that I've, I've not shared, or there's going to be concepts or, or certain aspects of a, of a complete redevelopment plan that will be overlooked tonight and we are just introducing this. This work needs to be done in committees, it needs to be done in the public, it needs to be done with a lot of thought. This is an introduction, just stressing that. I also want to thank Katie Bowden, Paulina Martinez on my team for helping put this together. There is a lot of work going into this. And I also want to highlight our, our partners in our special service areas, Annie Cokely, Catherine Gottsick, Laura Brown, and also Gina Speckman of the Visitors in the Adventure Bureau. Finally, Roger Sosa. Okay, so of the Evanston Chamber of, Paulina, you can start rolling the presentation. I appreciate it. Thank you. So I want, I want to focus on four things. I think we are going to recover, but we need an active intervention. This isn't going to happen without the council and the community actively involved. And I think we've done a good job to date, considering we've had the mayor's COVID Business Task Force and all the work leading up to this very moment. And, and we'll share with you shortly some of the things that we've done to help businesses, we think, stay afloat. They're, they're certainly not safe. There's, there's a lot of fear out there, but we think we've done some things to keep things pretty stable. So the four things I want to highlight throughout this presentation are we are kind of in the calm before the storm. That financial assistance has helped, it's stabilized, but things are going to get worse and we need to continue to think about how we continue to support our businesses. I want to talk a little bit about what we're calling the retailpocalypse. That's not something that I coined, that's a common phrase. This, these business closures happened and were happening before COVID and they'll continue to happen. COVID-19, as we all know and we've read about, is exposing economic and health inequities. The, the black and brown community has suffered greatly and we need to think bigger picture about how we create an economic program that really focuses on economic well-being, not just economic growth. And then Evanston will recover with an active, creative and collaborative solution and we'll get to that. So slide please. Are we on the next slide? Thank you. I wanted to point out on this slide that this is not the first time we, you know, this is, the human, humans have gone through this before, right? So this particular ad talks about people who are in quarantine or not isolated, that they have a bell telephone, right? We've got people in masks, we've got the barber shop, this is what my barber shop looks like to have noise. And the, the point is, we've been here, we've done it, we're not going to be on Zoom calls like we've not been on bell telephones forever. It's not our first pandemic, it won't be our last. We'll, we'll get through it. And again, I'm not understating, we're going to get through it, it's going to be a tough road. I just want to point out that we've been there before and, and we're going to get through it. And when we're, when we're through it, these shifts that we're seeing in the short term are hopefully not going to be permanent. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, I guess, journalism or kind of, it's clickbait in a way. We're, we're reading stories about how everybody's moving to the suburbs far out and they're building home offices or they're, or they're living in rural areas. We're going to be permanently working remote. You know, that, that's going to be something that happens in the short term, but it will, people need to be together. If we go to the next slide. So I want to talk a little bit about the COVID impact. And again, I just want to stress before I leave that slide that And again, I just want to stress before I leave that slide that that we are, we as human beings are meant to be together and to work together and collaborate. Isolating in my bedroom office at 8:49 is not something that's going to to be with us for the long term, it just isn't. So part one of this presentation, the COVID impacts on the current economy. So where are the customers? Obviously, there's social distancing. That's really caused a reduced street life, transit riderships down, customers are not at shops and restaurants. Anecdotally, but consistently, we're hearing that restaurants and retailers are 50%. The revenues are down 50% compared to last year. And that's, that's kind of like a good level. I mean, there are some really excellent performers who haven't seen a downturn at all, but they've been working really hard. But most saying it's 50% last year, some are saying it's less, and they're struggling. And, you know, part of that is half the student body is gone, there's a ton of layoffs. And, you know, our office buildings in downtown Evanston, they're not returning until spring of 2021. I should say they're not returning before spring of 2020. So when you have a decreased daytime population, that severely diminishes our daytime office population, there just isn't people to support all of our businesses. And we're starting to see a little bit of an uptick in closures. Next slide, please. I don't want to hang on this too long, but it's just a reminder that Evanston is indeed a college town. Sometimes we forget that, sometimes we don't believe it, whatever it is, whatever the reasons are. We often don't recognize the fact that it is a college town or we're a college town. And really, right now, we're seeing the impact in our hotels. Our hotels are not seeing the the bodies that they're used to seeing. There's a lack of athletics and other things. And our local coffee shops, restaurants don't have the kids studying. So that's a, you know, that's a major change. You don't see the vitality that you normally would. So those college kids, the staff, and then they supplement all those daytime office workers. Next slide. I'm gonna hand it over to Paulina.
Thank you, Paul.
To take over on some stats. You're welcome. I'll see if I can fix my technology in the meantime.
Thank you. So to build on what Paul has mentioned so far, and to better understand the context of the impacts and the recommendations that will be presented throughout this presentation, I want us to keep in mind our strengths as the community. First and foremost, Evanston is still a desirable place to live, and that is not something that we as staff say, but we consistently rank as one of the most desirable communities to live across the nation in various magazines. We are also, we are also in an enviable position as a as a suburb, sorry, in terms of public transportation. We are certified by the CTA, the Metro, PACE, that connects us to a world-class economic infrastructure in Chicago, and to talent and other resources and assets. Our access to Lake Michigan is both an economic, economic and recreational asset that really gives us advantages compared to adjacent communities that do not have access to the lake. Also, housing, housing a renowned education and healthcare institution such as Northwestern, and the three hospitals that we have in a community of 7,500 attract a well-educated workforce and provide us with access to some of the brightest minds, as well as other basic services that feed into all of our A-plus business districts that we have in Evanston that support our hotels and contribute to a low unemployment rate that we had pre-COVID-19. So we have to go through it to get, right? Despite our strong economy prior to COVID-19, the economic distress that we are experiencing is just starting. Although far we have not experienced as many business failures as we first feared, we'll likely see an increase of businesses closing during the winter months, especially if federal assistance does not come through. Some of the efforts we will see include a consistent, sorry, some of the impacts that we will see is includes high unemployment rates, higher vacancy rates throughout our business districts, and diminished tax revenues, among others. As you can see in this slide, throughout 2019, we had a pretty consistent low unemployment rate that averaged 3%. At the beginning of 2020, we actually had an unemployment rate as low as 2%. But as soon as the shelter-in-place order came into effect, our unemployment rate just skyrocketed directly to 13%. As of July 2020, our unemployment rate is 10%. In terms of vacancy rates, as of September 2, 2020, we have an 8.2% vacancy rate citywide and a 13.4 vacancy rate downtown. Just for comparison, in 2019, at the same time, we had, there's a difference of 2% citywide, so we had 6% vacancy rate and a 9% vacancy rate downtown, respectively. Since 2000, since January 2020, for business openings and closings, we continue to see the business cycle play out. In total, we've seen approximately 70 businesses close, about 32 of them were prior to COVID-19 or not due to the pandemic. But we have also seen new businesses come through, a total of 40, including four new food licenses. As you can see, during the first quarter of the of the year, most of our tax revenues were down. However, it is worth mentioning that the the reporting and the collection is usually delayed. However, for 2020, the Economic Development Division did waive all fees for for business registration, which accounts to approximately $25,000 at this point. One of the worst effects of the pandemic has been the extra hard impact it has had on minority populations, especially our black populations. I am sure that most of us have seen the alarming headlines about the increase in equities that this pandemic has further highlighted with with our black and brown populations. Although we do not have exact numbers for Evanston at this point, research from the Economic Policy Institute reveals that in Illinois alone, in the second quarter, unemployment was approximately 20% for our black population. This statistic is compounded by the fact that a lot of our minority populations are usually relegated to low-wage and service jobs. So most of those jobs have either been eliminated or they are considered essential, which also places these populations at a higher risk of contact contacting COVID-19, so such as cleaning crews or cooks. So what have we done about it? As a municipality, we've tried to address some of the issues and provide some temporary relief for our businesses. We have implemented a couple of different programs, including amending, amending the guidelines to the Entrepreneurship Support Program and calling it the Entrepreneurship Emergency Assistance Program. If the grants that are going to the city council tonight for approval are all approved, then that means that we have granted a total of $100,000 in assistance, $50,000 that were originally allocated for this program at the beginning of the year, in addition to $50,000 additional, $50,000 that came from the Local Employment Program account. We also have supported Lent with $100,000 for 0% interest microloans. Through the CARES Act, we have the newly, the new, the new program called the COVID-19 Micro Enterprise Grant that will be accepting applications until tomorrow, which also comes with technical assistance for our businesses. And and lastly, we have also partnered with with institutions such as the College School of Management to provide pro bono consulting for our business community. And I'll pass it on to Paul.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Paulina. And again, for those watching on the Zoom, that that is not a halo surrounding my head. That unfortunately is my bedroom ceiling fan, and I'm dealing with my technology the best I can. So if we can move on to the next slide, I want to talk about the retail restructuring and quickly get through this so we can get to our recommendations. So the retailpocalypse really began before COVID-19. We saw that in downtown Evanston with the loss of Gap, Barnes &amp; Noble. And over the years, you had Joseph A. Banks and 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 some of those other businesses on Sherman, when I started nine years ago, almost to the day. And that was, that's really rooted in a few, three, three key facets of the restructuring economy. You got a fast fashion mindset, a shift to athleisure, which is yoga pants and sweatpants. And I know that sounds silly, but that's that's what's happened. And there's also e-commerce. So with fast fashion, you've got a really quick fashion cycle. People want cheaper clothing, and they want it quickly, they want the seasons, it's no longer tied to seasons. They're expecting new clothing on a regular basis. You see the rise of H&amp;M and other stores like that. And it makes, the reason I'm bringing this up, because it changes the rent structure at at businesses, or sorry, at at shopping malls and in downtown storefronts. You can't, you can't rent an expensive space when you're selling $10 and $20 shirts. So so that's been a major change, as as with athleisure. Let's go to the next, thank you. E-commerce is here to stay. It's 18% of total resale, I'm sorry, retail sales this year, or generally, and then it's it's increased 30% this year over last because of of COVID and social distancing. People are not going into stores. So again, it it accounts for 18% of total retail sales, meaning there's still, that 72% is done at bricks and mortar. But the point here is that it's it's grown a lot this year. Let's go to the next slide. And then, as you can see from this chart, millennials are big online shoppers, and then it kind of, it it drops off as generations age. So what this is telling you, if you flip it around, as as millennials and Gen Xers continue to age, it means more and more of shopping, and including their kids, more and more shopping is going online. Next slide. So instead of following our kind of traditional guidelines where we really buy into like the shop small or shop local, we tend to try to get people into shopping local or shopping at bricks and mortar, we need to really shift to having people think about shopping unique or seeking experiences. But more importantly, we need to partner with our special service areas and our other partners to help our local businesses adapt to and adopt e-commerce. And that's kind of like a technical assistance program. It's it's getting people on board, it's it's warming them up to that. And we've started that. We we've started a program with some of the CDBG CV money. And see how it goes, but it's it's time, we think, to do that, and we're gonna, we're gonna start that. Can we go to the next slide? So I want to get into some recommended actions. I'm suggesting, and we're suggesting, that recovery and the restructuring is going to require some serious leadership and creativity. We need to align our operations and policies to help stabilize the local economy and expand revenues. We need to, you know, we're saying that we need to reduce the physical footprint of city administrative offices so we're able to provide the highest level of service to our constituents and have lower expenses on the administrative side. We need to, we're recommending that we need to shift our development mindset from a growth mindset to more of an economic well-being mindset. And we started that, and Alderman Ru Simmons knows this, she pushed us hard to start a financial wellness program, and we're partnering with First Northern Credit Union to do that. But that's, that's just one tiny step. We need to think about how we're, we as a community are doing from an economic perspective. And then finally, we need to really support our greatest asset that we have, our physical space. We have a beautiful community, a beautiful lakefront, beautiful campus, beautiful housing. We need to prioritize our built environment and focus on that. Improving permit processes and technologies, a stronger design review standards, mobility alternatives, and then work with our colleague Kumar and his team to really work on sustainability standards. Next slide. As alluded to in public comment, we're, economic development staff is continuing to recommend that we review the JLL report that was presented to the city council on April 27. We talk about the sale and consolidation of city-owned property. We think we have some valuable property that could be used in a different way. And revenues from those sales could both, you know, shift us into a different facility in downtown, which we think provides the greatest economic impact because it provides additional ability to spend lunch money, do shopping during during lunch break, things like that. There's a, there's a multiplier effect that happens. And let's, let's not hang too much on this one. I think we know what we're trying to say here. We have a savings reduction by having fewer properties and fewer older properties. Next slide. Okay, economic development model. Again, this, this is going to require more than a breezy six-point slide, and I really want to work with the Economic Development Committee and other committees of the city council to work through this. But we should be focusing on the economic well-being of Evanstonians and less about, and we haven't done a ton of this, but less about business growth through business attraction or that kind of growth. We're talking about developing our workforce. We're talking about, let's identify our unemployed population that is somewhere in the range, if we believe the Bureau of Labor Statistics, around 4,000. It's 4,000 people in Evanston. Just a few months ago, it was around 1,000, which, again, is hard, is hard to really believe. When you're at that low of a level, you're really at full employment, generally speaking. We need to emphasize affordable housing as an economic challenge and less about land use, in our opinion. It it should be less about how many units can you, you know, can you get a developer to provide, and more about, let's have a strategic economic plan that that looks at affordable housing as an economic challenge for developers. And then let's take a look at consolidating some of our economic development activities that are occurring in a number of divisions. And then finally, taking a look at a comprehensive land use and economic plan, and maybe convening a public-private partnership, kind of getting into an independent economic development council kind of model. If we go to the next slide. I'm gonna challenge myself and my team to spend a little time with this particular model that's, I stumbled upon it on Freakonomics podcast, but it's the Ray Worth Donut Economic Model. I'm tempted to say something about Benison's, but I'm not, but it's really about keeping the population in that, on my slide, it's a lighter green, keeping them in that safe and just space for humanity zone where we're solid social foundation, but we're keeping within an ecological ceiling. So we're not, we're not being environmentally harmful, and we're keeping people on a foundation of education, jobs, social equity, affordable housing and the like. So I really want to, I want to challenge myself and my team to spend some time with this particular model and see how we can apply it in a way we think about economic development in Evanston. Okay, next slide, please. Possibly drifting out of my territory here a bit, but I think it's important that we collaborate with our our planning partners and our our special service areas to make sure that our codes are up to date, to include solid design standards. I snuck a little drawing of Paris in there because we always like to compare ourselves to big cities. And why not? I think we could do a better job with some of our streetscape standards. I've been talking about this for years. I've been talking about this for years. If anybody went up to the Botanic earlier last year and experienced that light festival during uh Christmas holiday, uh, during that winter holiday. It um, it was pretty magical and I think we could do smaller versions of that right in Fountain Square. But I don't want to get too hung up on programming, but the point is, I think we can do things like this that enhance downtown Evanston in our business districts in ways that you might not get at a shopping center. That's my point. Next slide. Please. Um, we need to uh address this as soon as possible. And I, if I recall, we, we do have a draft coming to city council soon. Uh, we can't have, um, what I have in that circle line through it is brown paper peeling off windows and fading in the sun uh while we wait for new retail or new service uses to open in our storefronts. That's just not going to work. We need, uh, we're going to see a lot of this over the next twelve months and we can't have it. So I think we can do a better job. We can work with artists, we can work with um, I'm not sure whom, but if you look at two real, real examples here. Palm House on Howard Street did a fantastic job covering their windows during this um, during this construction project. And um, by the way, if you haven't stuck your head in that building, you should wait until you see what's going on in there. It's really amazing. But that particular storefront looks awesome. We should be doing that with all of our vacant stores. We should not allow vacant, or sorry, uh empties uh storefront displays or, or random things in the windows. We need to have an intentional storefront look. And I'm sorry, I'm hanging on this slide a little bit, but I think it's really important because if it looks better, if it has art, if it has messaging, then it's showing that we're being proactive. And uh, people will still want, they'll still enjoy walking in downtown, maybe to grab a coffee or something to eat. And still have a nice environment. Okay, next slide. So I, again, this is one that I'm looking forward to collaborating with my, my uh colleagues in planning and zoning. Uh, I think we need to look at some land use policies, take a look at some neighborhood plans. You know, Alderman Brithwaite and Alderman Ru Simmons, we've talked for some time about that West Evanston overlay and how that might be impacting development. We should probably take a look at that. Taking a look at our Tiff district plans, again, West Evanston is ideal to review. We've talked about uh that Northwest of Central Crawford, Grosse Pointe, Tiff. I think that's viable. Think we need to take a look at a way to uh, think of creating a, what I call like a high street or a retail node right on Sherman and try to concentrate the dwindling retail. And maybe that will help uh support it. You, you have an anchor with Target. Penzi Spices is opening across the street. There are a few anchors left. Uh, the bookstore, Bookends and Beginnings is expanding onto Sherman into a storefront. So we'll have that concentration of retail. Um, if there's a way that we can come up with some codes to encourage that. So we have that solid line of retail down Sherman and secondary uses along the East West Streets and at Orington and Benson. And then um, I already talked about uh some code changes for ground floor uses. Next slide. Are we on key takeaways? Yes. Um, so I, this is a summary. I just want to, I want to just leave on some of the things that want to be the key takeaways. Again, we're calm before the storm. The next few months are going to be really tricky. I think there's going to be an increase in failures. We're, we're hearing a little bit more from businesses who are really struggling. Unicorn Cafe announced today that they're closing. Um, the stimulus is gone and there's nothing in the pipeline. So the expectation should be that you're going to see more of this despite all the work that we're all doing, um, including all the hard work that our businesses are doing to try to survive. So keep that in mind. It's going to get worse before it gets better. COVID-19 is, of course, uh, you've heard this in your budget meetings. It's impacting city revenues, um, which ultimately uh impacts service delivery. We want to make sure that we're keeping Evanston a great place to live and that includes the services we provide as a city. Next slide, please. Sorry about that. COVID-19 is expediting retail apocalypse, uh, didn't cause it, but it's making it, making some of the retailers close faster. Uh, I don't want to hang on that anymore, but that is a fact. And we need to make sure we uh educate our community and the consumers in Evanston that that is what's happening. We have a strong competitor in Old Orchard. I, I uh went there a lot just to get a sense for what's going on. And from what I could see, every inline store, maybe except for two or three were occupied. It's, you know, there are one or two department stores that are closed and they'll be redeveloped at some point. But all those inline stores, um, including a new Amazon four-star store, they're open and there were people shopping. So um, it's a restructuring. Um, and we, we are only, downtown Evanston is only three and a half miles from that. Want to reiterate that. And the way retailers look at things, that's where they want to be. It's in the center of a market area. It's easy for Evanstonians to get there. It's easy generally for the students to get there. And since they're all struggling, they'd rather have one location that, that serves a broader market. I'm concerned, number four, the physical aftermath of COVID. We're going to need some new policies. First one we need to get on is vacant storefronts. Maybe consider zoning updates to allow alternative first-floor uses in all districts, not just uh downtown. I know that's controversial, we can talk about that. And then I talked about the High Street being Sherman. And then um, you know, perhaps most importantly, uh, the, the COVID-19 is exposing inequities in a big way. And um, I think we could do a better job as a community and definitely a better job as an economic development action for the city to really shift our focus and um, really deploy uh some staff to a coordinated workforce development effort. We have a lot of partners in town. But we need somebody to help coordinate that. If, if somebody comes to you as an elected official and says, hey, uh, how does so-and-so learn a new job skill or where should he go? I pretty much guarantee each of you is going to have somebody else. Go to Oakden, uh, there's National Able, maybe go to Evanston Rebuilding Warehouse. We need to get focused and I think we can do that. And then as we shift our focus um from economic growth to an economic prosperity, then we get into that whole idea of economic well-being. I think that's where I'll leave it off. I, I, I went over a little bit, I'm sorry about the slow start. But um, I think to get started on this ASAP, you know, we could start working on this in Economic Development Committee. Can work on this in other committees as well. But at some point, it's going to be useful to have some kind of aggregated way of, or consolidated way. Going to the same, going to one single source for economic development funds instead of having to go to work, go for work and go to CDBG and, and go to these different departments, our general assistants to find funding. So I'll leave it at that and I'll um yield to Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Give everybody a second to come back. All right, thank, Paul, thank, thank you for that really thorough analysis of the current situation. As well as I really appreciated the recommendations that you and your team made uh for the council to consider. Is Erica with us too? Erica, I just want to make sure we're centering the conversation right now correctly because ob- obviously there's a lot in here and there's a lot of recommendations that we could be discussing. Where do you, where would you like to see our conversation go this evening? Recognizing too that we also have an Economic Development Committee and in, in other functions and processes here in the city.
Uh, I, I, thank you for asking that. I think the purpose of tonight's presentation was just to give both the council and the community, even those that are on Economic Development Committee, a broad overview of what we're seeing and what we expect to see in the coming year. So um, I don't necessarily need any action on any of these priorities this evening. Uh, they will come to committee for discussion. Um, but if there's general questions about the presentation or any concerns that people wanted to bring up, uh, that could be what we would discuss tonight or the council could simply um accept and place this on file and we'll be coming forward with a lot of these priorities over the next several months.
So, so one thing that's um on my mind is, you know, Congress is that, is Congress is at a standstill right now in terms of any additional funding. I was on a call with Tony Preckwinkle and a bunch of other mayors today talking about the coronavirus relief funds uh that are out there. Right now, they have to spend those funds by the end of this year, by December thirty-first. Evanston, I think in, in um Kate Lewis Lakin, who's our recovery manager in terms of the financial recovery from this pandemic, has been doing a great job. We got six hundred and twenty thousand. We've already, you know, spent that money, we've been getting reimbursed from the county. But I think that there is going to be potentially additional money coming down eventually from Washington. And we ought to think about how that money can be used uh in terms of economic development um to support our local economy. Because this is, it's going to take years, honestly, to recover from this financially, economically. And, you know, putting a, a really thoughtful plan together so that we're able to move quickly, I think is going to be key.
Absolutely.
All right, I'm going to open it up if any questions, comments, Sisley, Alderman, Fleming.
Yeah, um, Paul, if you can just, or Erica, make sure that we as a council get that presentation. Obviously, it wasn't in the agenda and it was a lot to try to just take in. So if we can make sure we get a copy of it, that'd be great. Cause I, I think I do have some more questions once it flushes out. And then I can, I'm not on economic development, but I can be paying attention to when it comes to that committee so I can watch the conversation. One thing I'll just uh speak on, because this came up in a conversation with some people in my ward who did call me about some economic development um supports. And something that I think I've just always thought of and I, I realize, Paul, your intentions are good on this. But um, just, I think we are learning through this about inequities. Some people are learning more than others. Um, when we talk about um financial literacy, right? I, I realize that you're speaking of it in terms of probably business owners and, you know, getting things and kind of managing funds for business. But I was in a conversation where it was being spoken of almost in the sense of like poor people, right? So there's this whole conversation around inequities and black and brown people and poverty and so on and so forth. But I think we just want to publicly acknowledge that, you know, poor people don't really need financial management classes, right? They just need more money to manage. So it's not as if, I mean, I, I grew up poor and my mother could make twenty dollars go very, very far, right? So she didn't use to know how to manage her twenty dollars as much as she needed more than twenty dollars or an opportunity to make more money. So I, I realize what you meant probably was in context to growing a business, but I think I'm starting to hear just that term thrown around a lot more when we talk about inequities and poverty and black and brown people. And just want us to be really clear that, you know, poor people don't necessarily need money management classes as a way to not be poor. So that was just something that came to me, I wanted to share publicly. But yes, Paul, please send me the report and I, I have lots of thoughts. Again, um, Alderman Rainey, at the Palm House people, I do think have done a fabulous job with those windows. I was downtown today and saw the windows over at Panera, which I don't know who's responsible for that space, but night and day. And you're right, it does make a big difference in between walking down the street and feeling like um a neighborhood is, is blighted, right? Or a neighborhood is, just doesn't have as much life to it as other things. I don't know if I want to necessarily spend city funds on that kind of project, but I do think it makes a big difference.
Thank you, Alderman. Per- personally, I think the council, we should think about moving quickly in terms of appearances of these uh vacated stores and restaurants that we have throughout, throughout the city. You know, beautification and all that matters a lot. I mean, when we're trying to attract and bring people and bring people back. You know, I run my bucket through Will Met sometimes. I'm telling you, they're doing a great job there in terms of just that little downtown area that, that they have. And everything that this council did in terms of Fountain Square, I think makes it really attractive for businesses to be down here. But um, we've got, I think we've got to do something with all the vacant storefronts and having some sort of, you know, policy or local ordinance that says, hey, you just can't put brown paper over that, over that window. Would, would go a long way. Uh, Alderman Ru Simmons, did you have something?
Yeah, just quickly, Paul and Paulina, everyone that worked on this, thank you so much. I'm really encouraged to see a plan that we could break up and implement through various committees. Uh, to Mayor Hagerty's point about um urgency in the appearance of the downtown area and other commercial districts that are vacant. Um, we can, instead of like using city dollars or finding that partner with the arts community. Um, I've just become aware of some artists that um are housing insecure and losing um, you know, money that they need to store their art collections. Maybe there's some way to collaborate um, working with the Arts Council and other art agencies in town to get their art in the windows or something else. Um, but I definitely will be looking at this and working with the Economic Development Department to implement some of this quickly, um, just to uh bring morale to the, to the community and um confidence that we're working on a plan, attract new opportunities in businesses. So thank you and I'll be following up.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
I guess I'll just, anyone else want to add something?
I was just going to move that, uh, and it was, I, I do appreciate the very thoughtful and detailed presentation. I thought it was excellent. Um, I was going to move that we accept and place it on file and proceed.
Second.
Okay, um, all right. Uh, Alderman Rainey, did you have something to use?
I, I was just going to amend Don's motion and say, instead of placing it on file, could we send it to the Economic Development Committee for review?
Second.
I think, I think he said that's where it's going to go, so.
Well. Third, that's where.
Yeah, I accept the amendments.
All right, all right. Uh, City Clerk, can you take the role on accepting uh the Economic Development update and strategy and sending this to the Economic Development Committee?
Yes, Alderman Brithwaite.
Hi.
Alderman Wynn. I'm sorry, Alderman Wilson.
Hi.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Hi.
Alderman Sufferton.
Hi.
Alderman Ravel.
Hi.
Alderman Rainey.
Hi.
And Alderman Fleming. Oh, Fleming and Alderman Fisk.
Hi.
All right, SP two on an eight to zero vote has uh passed to be placed on file and sent to the Economic Development Committee. So thank you, Paul, and your team for all that, a good work in everything you're doing. Uh, it is an urgent matter. Um, we're now going to move to uh the consent agenda. Did have APW and planning and development this evening. So I'm going to ask uh the aldermen if you will take a minute and look at the um items on the agenda and let me know which ones you would remove from the consent agenda.
Hey, Hagerty.
Yes.
If, if I may, uh, ask the council members for a uh motion to reconsider uh the last regular meetings, uh, non-payment of, of an intern who worked in the office. Some just calling for an alderman, maybe the motion, someone who voted on the prevailing side's motion to reconsider. Uh, the young man is back in school now, uh, was expecting to receive that pay. Um, if I can just very quickly note that uh, I've seen from documents that have been FOIAed that there wasn't a documented hire and freeze policy. And also that there were, I think, over a hundred employees hired uh by the city during this hire and freeze period. So just hope that we wouldn't hold up uh this one young man's pay uh without taking a whole list to look at what's been going on.
So I'm going to, I'll take that now if anyone wants to move that motion to reconsider payment for uh that payment under the clerk's office. All right, I'm here, hearing nothing. I, I think there isn't a desire to reconsider that. Um, back to the consent agenda, please let me know items you'd like to remove. Uh, how about the uh Amazon credit card, A two probably has to be removed? Okay, I'll take that off.
And A sixteen was removed um by staff.
A sixteen, is it in committee or it was removed to?
No, the staff took it off. They're going to work on it some more and bring it back.
Oh, so it's, okay, it's off altogether.
It's off altogether. And I think A twenty, let me see.
You have a whole list, Sisley.
Hmm.
You have a whole list of things.
Well, A sixteen was off, A twenty-five is going, I mean, eight, A eighteen, sorry, through twenty-three, they were um, we had. They're off because we had to suspend the rules.
All right, so eighteen to A twenty-three are all off, okay.
Yeah, for suspending the rules. And A twenty-five is also being removed by staff.
A twenty-five.
Yes.
Meaning it's coming, meaning it's?
My note is that it's being removed from the council agenda. So I think they're removing that one as well to work on it some more.
Okay.
A.
Go ahead, Alderman Wilson?
I was going to say A12.
A12 is off, okay.
Are we on P? Are we on planning and development?
You can do P and D too, yeah.
Okay. Mayor Hagerty, P1 is held until our next meeting, September 20, hmm?
First?
That was by request of the applicant. And I think, I think that was it.
All right.
Yep.
All right. Any, any other items? Okay.
One second, please.
Okay.
Nothing else.
Okay. On items A18 to A23, if they're all liquor license ones, we could include on the consent agenda and then just move a motion to suspend the rules for introduction and action.
So we do the opposite, suspend the rules and then move introduction.
Okay, yep. So we could do that. Is that okay if we take them as a group?
That's how we did it in AMPW.
Okay. All right. So why don't you, does someone want to move the motion on A18 to A23 to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Somebody move it, okay. The motion, the motion was to suspend the rules allow for introduction in action for A18 to A23. It was moved by Alderman Braithwaite, seconded by Alderman Wilson. Seeing no discussion, City Clerk, can you take the role, please?
Actually, Mayor, so before we start voting on things, did we do the little introductory thing, or do we still need to do that as far as proceeding with?
Oh, we did not.
Okay, so, so we haven't taken any action yet, so let's do that. I move that we suspend the rules to proceed with our action items, using the virtual Zoom service in conformance with the mayor's, I'm sorry, the governor's former directives regarding COVID-19.
Second?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch you seconded that. Was it Alderman Braithwaite?
Second.
Yeah, second.
Fleming seconded it, okay. Clerk, could you take the role along for virtual?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Should we redo the vote earlier? We did take one action.
I'm going to say, we'll pass on that, we'll pass on that vote, redoing that vote. Unless council feels strongly, we need to go back and do that vote. That was just to place something on file and move it to the Economic Development Committee.
We can't hear you, Kelly.
You might have to unmute your device.
She is unmuted, we just can't.
Our actual device as opposed to this software.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Kelly. All right, maybe she was telling me we do need to do it. So we will go back, we will go back and do that vote now that, that we did this and apologize for forgetting to do that at the very beginning of the meeting. All right, so we had a motion by Alderman Braithwaite, it was seconded by Alderman Wilson to suspend the rules allow for introduction in action for A18 to A23. City Clerk, can you take the role on that, please?
Yes. Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Clerk. Action. Okay, so the rules have been suspended to allow for introduction in action for items A18 to A23. So we, let's see, Alderman Ru Simmons, can you just move the motion on the consent agenda? I've got the items that we agreed to take. Cicely's chair.
Well, I was chair because Alderman Simmons wasn't here tonight.
Okay, Alderman Fleming then, okay.
It doesn't make, okay. I move consent agenda for Administration Public Works Committee that was held this evening.
Second.
Okay. City Clerk, can you please take the role, please?
Yes. Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
All right, great. The consent agenda passes eight to zero. We're now going to move to the items that were removed.
Mayor, actually, Alderman Fleming's motion was consent agenda with regard to APW only. So I would move that the balance of the consent agenda be?
I'm sorry.
Passed. So P and D in the HS1 and HS, I'm sorry, ED1.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. City Clerk, can you take the role, please, for the consent agenda?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Clerk. Okay, now the entire consent agenda has been passed on an eight to zero vote by the city council. We're going to move now to the items that were removed. Just so I'm clear, I've got Alderman Ru Simmons as the chair for the APW. So, so I'm just going to ask Alderman Simmons if you'll introduce for action A2?
Sure. Approval of BMO Harris Amazon Credit Card Activity, Staff recommends approval of the City of Evanston's BMO Harris Amazon Credit Card Activity for the period ending June 26, 2020 in the amount of $10,735.11. This is for action.
Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk, can you please take the role on A2?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman, I, Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
All right, A2 approval of BMO Harris Amazon Credit Card Activity passes the city council on a seven to zero vote, with Alderman Sufferton abstaining. We're now going to move to item A, let's, I just want to make sure, I know the items we pulled off, A12?
Yes.
Does that need to be discussed or still in committee?
A12, Alderman Wilson pulled off for discussion.
Okay, all right, so Alderman Ru Simmons, yeah, could you move that?
Sure. A12, Resolution 62R20, creating a provisional moratorium on tenant evictions notice due to COVID-19 impact. Staff recommends city council adoption of Resolution 62R20, creating a provisional moratorium on tenant eviction notice due to COVID-19. Move approval?
Second.
All right, so this is open for discussion. Alderman Wilson?
So I understand, you know, the why and the intent on this, but in light of the federal moratorium that came down, I think in the interim, since this was first being discussed, I'm concerned that this is going to end up doing potentially more harm than good. I also have some reservations on to what extent we can preempt state law. I know that there are provisions in here with regard to security deposits, and there are some state law provisions governing that. I'm not sure that we can circumvent those existing state laws. But, you know, sort of the threshold question is, this is generally intended to help tenants. And, you know, with this moratorium that the federal government has in place, as much as I question the motives on some of those decisions by the federal government, I'm worried that this particular resolution that we're proposing could mislead tenants into thinking that they had to make some sort of deal with the landlord in order to save the property, the way that this is drafted, when the fact of the matter is, pursuant to the federal act, I don't think you have to do anything other than submit the, submit the declarations required. So what I don't want to do is, is kind of lure tenants into, you know, cutting a deal that might be worse than they could otherwise, you know, exercise using the rights under the federal, federal act. In addition, I think it's going to create additional hoops for the landlords to jump through, when the fact of the matter is, they're not going to be able to do the evictions anyway. So it suggests that, you know, landlords have to, you know, engage in these conversations, but really to what end? You know, it's inferring that if they don't do this, they can evict, when I don't think they can pursuant to this federal, federal law. So I don't think that it dovetails well enough with that, and I'm really, really concerned that we're going to be misleading tenants into, into taking action that's going to adversely impact them.
Thank you, Alderman Ru Simmons.
To Alderman Wilson's point, can I have some background on what this covers or accomplishment, accomplishes that is not covered in either the state or the federal moratorium specifically?
So Kelly, are you on the line? Can you speak to this?
We know.
We can figure it out, yes.
Essentially, we drafted this as a stopgap between the state issued moratorium and, because we were led to believe that there was a possibility the moratorium would end at the end of summer. In the interim, what's happened is the CDC has implemented a federal moratorium, which will go to the end of the year. So we amended this resolution to just basically dovetail the state and federal moratoriums, which will just extend those provisions for another 60 days once they end. So if, if at the end of the year, the federal moratorium ends, this would last up into February. So it essentially provides the same coverage.
So it provides the same coverage, or it provides an additional January, February? I heard you say two different things. Could you clarify that, please?
Right, so there's a current, we don't need to do anything at this time, because there's no moratorium until the end of the year. What, what we amended the resolution to be is an extension of that, should it end at the end of the year. So it would extend it until February for Evanston.
Alderman Wilson and Alderman Ravel?
And I really just think we should wait till we're a little closer to, to, to December. We don't know what things are going to look like in a few months. They could be different, they could be worse, they could be better. This might not suit our purposes at all in three months. So, you know, passing this now doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. You know, we're extending something that we don't know what it looks like. So I would be much more comfortable if we, if we got closer to that time period and see what the circumstances look like. And again, it does put these, it puts requirements on landlords who are seeking to do an eviction that they can't actually even do. So what I'm expecting to happen is landlords and tenants are going to be confused by that. They're going to think, okay, well, tenant's not paying your rent, I have to go through this process. But they're going to be going through a process that is not going to accomplish anything. It's going to, it's going to kind of be in the face of the federal moratorium, and they're going to be doing, you know, I think something that might lead either a landlord or a tenant into making a deal that might not be in their best interest, given the existence of that federal, federal moratorium.
Thank you. Going to go Alderman Fleming, then Alderman Rainey?
Yeah, so in reading the CDC moratorium, it doesn't apply to Illinois. The CDC moratorium doesn't apply to any state, tribal land, I'll read it for you, state, local territory or tribal area that already has a residential moratorium. So we have one currently in Illinois. I don't know if the governor's going to extend it, I assume he will. But as long as we have one in Illinois, the CDC moratorium does not apply to us. It's currently also being challenged in court. So I'm not sure if I want to hang my hat for tenants' rights on that, given our federal government. So as Kelly said, we dropped it, or she dropped it, this one some time ago. As we know, the governor has been renewing them, but at some point, I imagine he's going to stop. And this just provides extra protection for our residents. And speaking with Joe Roth and Sarah Flax and several people about this moratorium and how it's crafted, we already, as a city, contract with Metropolitan Tenants Association that provides, you know, classes and workshops and tenant and landlord mediation, you know, outside of the COVID all the time for our citizens. And so in this ordinance, we use that same thing, which is kind of just an idea of trying to allow tenants and landlords to go through whatever they can work through before anything gets filed. And as we know, landlords have the right to file. Those filings just aren't being heard right now. But this is an extra protection for people in Evanston using the same safeguards that we already have in place. It's very clear that you have to have an economic hardship based on COVID. It's very clear that that hardship had to start pretty much when our shelter on place starts, and it only has to do with that. So landlords are still protected against people who are trashing apartments or anything else that might lead them to foreclosure. So while the CDC sounds good on paper, it doesn't apply to us right now, as long as Governor Christopher has a moratorium. And it could be thrown out. I mean, I realize I don't know this, but it could be thrown out in court, just like anything else. So this was a safeguard, as she says, to extend that. Hopefully, we're in a better place whenever the governor's moratorium ends, but we don't know. And if you're like me, you probably get a lot of phone calls, what people who need rental assistance. And while there's a lot of programs out there, there's a lot of people who are looking for assistance. As I said earlier on the committee call, Sarah is trying to work through some CDBG funding, which hopefully will allow some landlords to have some assistance. Because even if tenants are applying for assistance, they might not get it, or they might just get it once. I mean, we know the jobs are not bouncing back, as Paul Zama's act just told them. So this is an additional safeguard for our Evanston residents, that they can access some supports through Metropolitan Tenants Association, hopefully work something out with their landlords and be able to stay housing stable until they get back on their feet.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rainey?
And regardless, no matter how many evictions the landlords file, the courts aren't taking them. So, I mean, there is that protected.
Alderman Wilson?
I, I just, I wanted to point out, the, the CDC directive says that it doesn't apply where a local government or a state has a moratorium with the same or greater level of protection. So it would apply to us to the extent that this is a, the federal one is a blanket complete ban, and this is more of a limitation that requires the landlord and the tenant to do a deal. So that's, that's, I think, where it could really lead it to into dangerous confusion. Because if you have landlords and tenants thinking, okay, if we make some sort of deal, and the tenant doesn't live up to that, then the landlord can proceed with the eviction, that's not the case. Because the federal moratorium precludes that eviction if the tenant prepares the document. And if the tenant is lured into thinking they don't need to prepare the document, and they don't do it, then the landlord can evict, because they didn't follow the federal, federal requirements. So this is, I mean, this is a terrible mistake. I think we're setting people up to have potentially disastrous results. I mean, if it needs to be reworked a little bit, but like I said, it does not dovetail with the, with the recently drafted and adopted CDC provisions. So if it's, you know, if there's a desire to have greater protections, maybe we can entertain that. But the way it's written right now, I think opens the door. um, maybe we can entertain that, but the way it's written right now, uh, I think opens the door, um, for the opposite to occur.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite and Alderman Rue Simmons.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Wilson, for your attention to detail. Can I just suggest that we hold this for a couple of weeks or hold it over to the next meeting, give Alderman Wilson an opportunity to, uh, check with our legal department as well as Alderman Fleming can weigh in as well. I mean, I don't see any reason to rush this and I definitely don't want to, uh, make any mistakes. So I'm gonna move.
I don't know that, we need to get legal counsel. It's been held once already, so.
It's been held over?
Yes.
So can I?
I mean, I don't know if we can hold it again or if we just vote it down and then if Alderman Wilson wants to work on it and bring it back, that can happen. I don't know what the rules are for holding.
Table, table.
And I can table it. I'll table it. I move to table this to the next meeting.
Second.
There it is. An item can only be held once and table include.
But it could be tabled.
Table to a date certain.
You can table it to a date certain.
All right, table it till the next meeting.
With, I mean, when it comes back, can we be more clear on the, um, federal moratorium? Because it's my understanding, um, in line with what Alderman Wilson is saying, that the greater protection actually is in the federal, um, moratorium. So I would like more understanding on that and, um, also consideration for the amount of support that's available for the tenants and the little resource available for the landlords and, um, any of our landlords providing affordable housing are, uh, moderate income themselves. So we need to, um, accelerate the conversation that, um, Sarah Flax is working on, on how we can support the landlords as well.
All right, thank, thank you.
And evictions, I mean, everyone should know evictions are not happening. Like you have to have very extreme and ex, ex, uh, specific circumstances to even get into court. I mean, I'm sure Alderman Wilson could talk to you more about that. But landlords can tell you that evictions are not happening and it's very unclear on when it's even possible, when landlords are going to pay. So this is more of a community, um, issue that I think deserves some more attention. But the, the tenants are definitely protected right now.
That's what I said.
So there's a motion to hold there.
I can just quick. Go ahead, clerk.
Yeah, I just want to recommend, uh, that folks, uh, if you have issues, I've heard of folks in the community who are, uh, have landlords that are threatening, uh, eviction during this period. And so I'd recommend that folks reach out to open communities, uh, and other local services if you're having issues, uh, with, with, with a landlord or with being able to pay rent.
Thank you, clerk. We have a contract, the city has a contract with Metropolitan Tenants, uh, organization, so.
Yes, yes.
All, all right, so, uh, Alderman Braithwaite, uh, moved to table this item to a date certain, which was the next meeting. Uh, that was seconded, so, um, that's good enough, right? I don't have to go do a vote on that.
Even all in favor might be.
We, we need to, we need to vote.
Oh, I do need to do a vote on that? Okay.
Yeah, it's the whole that we don't.
Okay, it's the whole we don't and the table I do. Okay, so city clerk, can you please take that role?
Yes.
At table.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson. I got it, I saw you.
Aye, aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferden.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Um, Alderman Fleming.
No.
And Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Sorry, it's always six chairs and everyone's changed where their square is.
So on a six, six to two vote, uh, the Evanston City Council is tabled to the next meeting. A12 Resolution 62 dash R dash 20, creating provisional moratorium on tenant eviction notices due to COVID-19 impact. All right, uh, I have, the other items that were removed were, uh, not on the city council agenda. They're off altogether, removed by the staff. That was A16 and A25. P1 committee, so that's for us. So that, uh, takes us through the consent agenda and the items that were removed off of the council. We're now going to move to call the wards. Uh, Alderman Braithwaite, leave your script off this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank all of the second ward residents that, uh, came out to our ward meeting, um, last week, Thursday, as well as our city manager, uh, Erica Storley, for the budget overview. Um, this is just a side comment and I've, I've shared this before. It, it, it bothers me sometimes when uh, residents, excuse me, it doesn't bother me when a resident advocates for their position. But it does bother me when we refer to any part of our wonderful town as a ghetto. And I just, I, I, I can't let that comment go. And I think it's, uh, it's misplaced. Uh, it's undeserving and it isn't fair to the residents who live in that area. So I'll just leave it right there. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Alderman. Um, Alderman Wayne isn't here tonight, so Alderman Wilson.
No report.
All right, Alderman Rue Simmons.
Um, thank you. Uh, and we will have our ward meeting this Thursday. We've postponed it so that we could have a productive budget conversation after all of the fifth ward residents attend, um, budget meeting. So I hope to see you there Thursday, 7:00 PM.
Great, thank you. Alderman Sufferden. Okay, nothing there. Alderman Revelle.
I'd just like to remind the community that, uh, next Monday, the 21st, we're going to be having our special council meeting to hear from the, um, organizations who have presentations to make for Harley Clark. And then I'm having a ward meeting on Tuesday, September 22nd, uh, Zoom meeting, of course. And we're going to be talking about police services in Evanston, um, and update on Central Street business. 7th floor infrastructure project, um, 1900 Sherman Building. And probably some cleanup from the Harley Clark discussion the day, the night before.
All right, great, thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Um, want to let everybody know, if you don't already, that Bike the Ridge is on. It's, uh, Sunday morning, nine to one, same as always. We'll have several food trucks and, uh, the only difference is you'll have to wear your mask this year. Um, also, I want to get a clarification on, um, deadly force. Um, Mayor Hagerty, you reported tonight that in the last decade, 10 years, there were four instances of deadly force. And it was my understanding that the four incidents were different than you reported. And I want clarification from the chief, uh, what those incidents were. Thank you, that's all.
Sure. So we'll ask, I don't know if the chief's here right now.
Uh, it's not urgent.
Yeah, yeah, so at the human services, at the human services, you'll get the report, you'll see how they put it up in the report. And then you guys, the police can, uh, address that then.
I'd like it before human services, but it's not for tonight.
All right.
I'll get it.
Also, chief, there's been an incident in my ward tonight that is very, very serious. And I've asked you two or three times by texts that I need clarification about what's going on.
I'll get it, Alderman. I was on this listening, so I'll get it.
I know, I know, I need it now.
All right, Alderman Fleming.
Uh, yes, I'm encouraging everyone in the ninth ward to participate in the budget meeting on Wednesday. Um, I have also moved my ward meeting to Thursday of this week. Um, so we will recap the budget and talk about several other things coming up in the ward. Um, and for those who participated in our restorative, um, communication conversations, we are doing part two with building community block by block conversations, which will start next week. So we'll be looking in your email probably tomorrow for signups for those for the ninth ward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alderman Fisk.
No report.
Okay, thank you. All right, Alderman Wilson, could you lead us into executive session, please?
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120 slash 2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel litigation and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Urban Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120 slash 2A, C1, C11 and C21.
Second.
All right. City clerk, can you please take the role?
Yes. Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons. Alderman Sufferden.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
All right, thank you, clerk. On an eight to zero vote, the Evanston City Council is going to recess into executive session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening.